Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. The time is now 7:54. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, notice that this meeting was published in the December 11th, 2014, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we jump to Minutes and Communications, we are going to take something out of order tonight, and first, let me apologize for being so late by coming out, but we want to do the proclamation for Mr. Chalk, and we're very sorry to keep you waiting. Tonight, we have a very special guest, Mr. Chalk and his family is here. It's not too often we get the privilege, and this proclamation is on behalf of all the Commissioners here, that we have somebody that reaches 100 years old in our community, so we want to congratulate them. The proclamation reads, whereas Terrence Chalk was born April 4th, 1915, in Birkenhead, England, and whereas Terrence grew up in Bermuda and became the editor of the Mid-Ocean News, one of Bermuda's finest newspapers, and whereas, while on a trip to the United States, Terrence met his wife, then brought her back to Bermuda, continued to work at the newspaper, and whereas Terrence desired to move on to a larger news venue, so he moved his family from Bermuda to New Jersey, and whereas in 1947, the Chalk settled in Nutley, buying a house on Carteret Place, where they raised their five children, and whereas Terrence secured a job with the United Press International, where he worked for 37 years until retiring, and whereas after retirement, Terrence joined in Nutley Little Theater and performed in 15 shows, including Barefoot in the Park, which was directed by his daughter Vicky, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Vestas State of New Jersey, that Terrence Chalk, who turned 100 years old on April 4th, 2015, be congratulated and recognized for reaching this momentous milestone with dignity and pride. From all of us, happy birthday, Mr. Chalk.
Ask me how I did this, and I didn't do anything. I just sat there and let it happen. And I did all the things you're not supposed to do, like having bacon for breakfast. Thank you all. I think this is probably the most notable thing I ever did in my life.
We're very happy for you. Happy birthday again. Congratulations. Didn't we sing happy birthday? To lead the charge.
Talk, good talk. Think.
Fired.
Happy, happy, healthy birthday. Yep. Okay, Madam Clerk, should we continue with our agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Yes. We have Board of Commissioner minutes for March 3rd, 2015, and March 17th, 2015. I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I abstained from, I approved March 3rd. I abstained from March 17th.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye. I see we have Communications and Correspondence?
Yes, Mayor. We have, the Nutley Rotary has submitted an event application to host a motorcycle run on Sunday, October 4th, 2015. I need a motion.
Move it. Need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye.
The Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day Parade Committee has submitted an event application for Columbus Day Celebration to be held on October 11th, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye.
And the Nutley Booster Club has submitted an event application to host a Father's Day Street Fair on Sunday, June 21st, 2015, between 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye.
And that's it for Communications today.
Thank you. We did our proclamation. Again, congratulations to Mr. Chalk. We will, I see we have an ordinance, public hearing. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, tonight, our public hearing is regard to ordinance 3304, which once again establishes what the state statutes refer to as a cap bank. This is a paper memorandum, in effect, bank account, like as insurance policy, that in the event something in the future that was extraordinary happened, that causes to have a need to rise above the 2% cap, we would have the ability to actually do that. By having the cap, we actually stay within the requirements of state statute. Historically, though, we have not had a need to do that. We've always had our focus on affordability, however, so this is just more of a just-in-case.
Open the public hearing?
Oh, excuse me. Is there anyone this evening that would like to comment on ordinance number 3304?
Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye.
Did we do the bills?
We'll go back.
Okay. We're going to do the budget before bills?
Yeah. We need to, Madam Clerk, we did miss the bills this evening.
Yeah, yes. Can we do the bills before we do the budget?
Do the bills? Public Affairs, $178,858.03. Revenue and Finance, $3,226,818.25. Public Safety, $68,616.85. Public Works, $65,836.25. Parks and Public Property, $439,869.69. Total Payroll, $753,371.95, for a grand total of $4,733,371.2.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petrangelo?
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Tonight, we have a public hearing on our budget. Just as, before we start, just to be clear, tonight, we are holding the public hearing. We will not adopt our budget this evening, as we, because we are working with the state to acquire state aid, and those negotiations are ongoing, we have not received final approval yet to adopt our budget. This is very consistent with last year, so we should be able to look to adoption in the May timeframe. So tonight, we will not have a vote on the budget, that once we receive final state approval, and as they finalize the state budget, we'll be able to adopt our budget. So tonight, we have just a public hearing. When we think about and look at this budget, the budget has been up on the website, it has been available to the public since it was introduced, and I would characterize the budget in a couple ways. One is that this budget includes an increase in state aid from $2,750,000 in 2014 to, so far, $5,239,000 in state aid for 2015. That's an increase in our aid of roughly $2.4 million, a little bit of rounding in there, but the reality is, is that it reflects the ongoing transition of the Hoffman LaRoche property. We were able to, as a municipality, negotiate provisions into the state budget that allows us, under the transitional aid formula, which they call transitionally light, to recognize that there are times when events happen at a municipal level that really have an impact at the state level as well, and that municipalities should not have to struggle through those on their own. So while we've had to adjust the assessed value of the Hoffman LaRoche property, each year that we've made those adjustments, we have been able to submit a request for offsetting aid to absorb the effect of that. The special treatment of this particular type of aid, which makes it unique, is we are a municipal government. We're not the school district, and we're not the county. A resident's tax bill is comprised of those three components of their bill. We're able to negotiate with the state for the full amount of that aid, so that the aid where we talk about actually reimburses us for the school portion of that lost revenue, the municipal portion of that lost revenue, as well as the county. So it's a unique provision that we've been able to do. This year, we had to further reduce the valuation of the Hoffman LaRoche property by $102 million. Our full request for aid is $6.2 million, however, that amount is still pending, which is why we're only having a public hearing tonight. We've been proved to anticipate 85% of that request, which equals the $5.2 million that I mentioned earlier. So we're making very good progress, recognizing that the transition of the Roche property has a significant impact on our township, which we have to work our way through and manage. So working with the Commissioners as a group, we have been focused on affordability and spending throughout each budget year. So with the decisions that we made, and managing the cost and the spending that we've been able to manage, our appropriations, our spending, is increasing by $317,000. That's less than 1%, it's actually six tenths of 1%. So the value of that is that we are managing our costs very well. We could not offset 100% of that, because there are certain things that happen that are beyond our control. So some of that affects us, is an increase in our sewer costs by $110,000, an increase in our insurance costs, and our liability insurance, as well as healthcare insurance costs that was there. We did get a benefit of having our pension costs go down, which partially offsets that, but it wasn't able to absorb all of it. So the reality is, is that on a cost basis, we are increasing our spending by $317,000. Now, what's interesting about that is that under state law, there's something that they call a tax levy cap, and there's an appropriation cap, or a spending cap. How much money are we able to increase our budget each year and comply with the state budget? What's interesting about that for Nutley is that if you look at our spending cap, it's allowed to go up 2%. If that cap was to be met, and we stayed within that state statute, instead of our costs going up $317,000, and we just managed to the maximum of that cap, spending could have gone up $3.1 million. But we didn't do that. We can't afford that. So we've been very careful about how we spend. The other piece is, is that everybody's familiar with, that the state has what they call the levy cap, and that that's allowed to go up 2%. Reality is, given where we are, we are actually $1.3 million below that cap. So we are below the state caps, both the appropriation cap and the levy cap. The levy itself, the amount of money that we have to raise from taxpayers this year, like last year, has actually gone down, right? So the municipal levy went down this year, $167,000, which means we're collecting, having a need to collect, less money from the taxpayers. It's a great story, but it's an incomplete story. The reality is that because of the lower assessed value of the town, primarily attributed to the changes that's occurring at the Roche property, the way we spread our budget, the cost to each taxpayer, changes. And the reality is, that causes the tax rate to increase. So at the municipal level, the tax rate increase is 2.7%, right? Which translates to, if you have a home that's assessed at $315,000, that translates into a tax increase, on average, of $94. If we get the additional $1 million from the state that we've been negotiating for, that $94 million will reduce to about $62. So we'll still have an increase, but it will be lower. And the fact is, is that the adjustments at Roche are so large, they just can't be absorbed within that property, given the revenue offset. It's a smaller base, which has to be spread to each taxpayer each year, the same way by formula, but it basically says, we're spreading our cost to a smaller base, which increases the rate. So it's a very simple formula. The costs, we've been holding costs down, but moderate increase because of primarily insurance costs and sewer costs, when you think about the overall increase, the composition of it, however, that's being, that benefit is being moderated by a lower assessable base for the. It wouldn't be, it'd be incomplete, and Commissioner Tucci, you know, raised this in conference, and we should put the whole story out, is that we've been living in an environment for years where real estate, the real estate market has been very volatile. Values have been going down, which actually drives rate up. So we've been seeing that. This year, the real estate market has actually stabilized a bit more, so we're not going to see that a lot of that variation at the residential level, but it's not enough to offset the loss of the ratable at the Hoffman LaRoche property. So while that property remains in flux, because we still have a lot of work to do, and all of the Commissioners are working very hard to address that, that the reality is, until we get clear on what that future is, we won't get a benefit from all of the conservatism and the work that we've been doing as a board over these past few years. So hopefully, we'll see a turn, as the real estate market changes, and as we get clear on what the future is for Roche, that could have a potential of actually causing the tax rate to drop. And it could drop because we've been conservative about our spending for these past several years. So with that as an introduction, Mayor?
Sure. I'll give everybody a chance to comment, and I'll comment last. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, any tax increase is never easy to pass on to the public, but talking about less than $100 on the municipal end, you look at some of the cuts that we have in all departments, and our other expenses, it shows they're working hard to minimize that increase. On the Public Works end, we're down $148,000 from last year's budget, and we're less this year than when I took office in 2000. Our budgets, over the last seven years, has actually gone. So I'm kind of proud of that, and would like to thank, you know, all the Commissioners for their work. You know, the biggest part of this budget is not only our individual efforts, but also the effort in going to Trenton and getting that transitional aid, because that's important. And Commissioner Evans, in particular, for your explanation to the state, and for all of our efforts in going out and using our friends and contacts to lobby for that transitional aid. So I'm proud that we're down this year $148,000, and I'm also proud that we are less than our budgets, less than when I took office in 2000.
Commissioner Rogers?
You know, I get around. I'm here every day, and I meet hundreds of people, hundreds of residents each month. And I've asked them this question, what are you concerned about? And people are going to say, yes, just like those of us up here, they're concerned about taxes, federal taxes, state taxes, county taxes, local taxes, and the cost of living. But in speaking to the residents of Nutley, there was one common theme that was discussed at length, and that was their concern for their quality of life, maintenance of services, that the Township of Nutley has maintained since way before me. They were concerned that maybe public safety would suffer. Public safety isn't suffering because Mayor Petrangelo, under extraordinary restraints when it comes to money, and extraordinary concerns regarding manpower, has been able to ensure that when you pick up the phone and you call the police department, fire department, and emergency services, you don't have to wait more than two or three minutes. That service has been maintained. You need a police officer? If you need a police officer to catch your dog, to comfort you, they're there, just like the fire department is, just like emergency services. The mayor of the Township has not, under extraordinary circumstances, cut those services. Let's talk about the parks. Let's talk about recreation. I get around the country, and you know, I've been around all sorts of places, but I am yet to see recreation programs in another town, another city across the state, has been maintained by Commissioner Tucci's department. I heard parents just the other night say, you know, you could come to Nutley, and your kids, they've got everything and anything they want to do. He hasn't cut services, and yet, under great budget restraints, been able to ensure that children have a place to play, which, by the way, not many people think of this, but that's part of a crime prevention program, too, because by those recreation programs at a very young age, he's keeping kids out of trouble. Let's go to Commissioner Evans. You know, it's not easy being a Director of Finance, because it's a tough job in bringing four of the Commissioners together and saying, fellows, you're going to have to cut your budget, you're going to have to save here, save there. He's done his part. He's also done his part in something I didn't know until I got onto this seat. It's called code enforcement and property maintenance. They're not perfect, but I got to tell you, you go through the streets of this town, street by street, yeah, you'll have one or two homes, maybe, that are not that well-kept, and we know we've got some issues on Franklin Avenue with the businesses. This is a well-groomed town. People take pride in their town, and code enforcement is right on top of any problem that might exist. And now, let me talk about my buddy here, Gentleman Joe. I call him Gentleman Joe because he truly is a gentleman. When we had Hurricane Sandy hit and the snowstorms hit, problem after problem, trees coming down, branches coming down, twigs coming down, lines coming down, his department was out there, and again, under very difficult, difficult financial restraints, not one service was cut. So I say this to the people of Nutley, we're all concerned about taxes. We pay taxes. We've raised our kids here, but we've worked hard as a team. And just take a step back and think about, is there any other better place to live than Nutley? And if there is, fine, but I've got to tell you something, I would never move out of this town, because I know, like I said, need a cop, a fireman, they're going to be there, Mayor. I had younger kids, they'd be down there at the Parks Department, and an individual who's worked very hard on our finances and code enforcement, you know, when it comes to Department of Public Works, I see the guys out there in the rain, know what recycling, doing their job. So I want to thank you, fellows, for helping me out also with my budget, and it's a good team. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Thank you for your kind words, Commissioner Rogers. Very eloquent. Just to follow up on what Commissioner Evans stated moments ago, there is, in fact, a light at the end of the tunnel. Property values, as they continue to tick up and increase, and as we continue to repurpose and work with Hoffman LaRoche, and Hackensack, and Seton Hall, and the developer, all right, and those ratables return back online, we have a great potential, and not on a dollar-for-dollar basis, but a great potential to reduce our tax rate. So life in Nutley is not hopeless. It's very hopeful. We have many positive things happening, and we expect them to come to fruition, as long as we continue to stay the course, and do, continue with our negotiations, and keeping our noses to the grindstone, and doing what we do, as we feel very well every day, in and out. In the Parks Department, we are $3,293 less in controllable costs than we were last year. We have some increases in group insurance, and our liability insurance, and property insurance, and automobile insurance, but it's important to note that at the end of the year, we average, from the Parks Department, returning back to the Town Treasury, anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 a year. So while you see certain numbers here, and we're proud that we're less than what we were last year, what we return to the Town Treasury is actually much greater than this, and it's something that's been consistent, and that Commissioner Evans takes those dollars, he repurposes them, and we reapply them, which all goes hand in hand with controlling costs and consolidating how we do business here in Nutley. So while this is not an ideal budget, because of circumstances beyond our control, I think it's a very good budget at this time, right now, in Nutley.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci? I'd just like to add my comments. First of all, I wanted to thank Commissioner Evans. How you somehow simplify all these numbers is amazing to me, because I know there's a lot of moving parts to it, and to be able to give us a snapshot of it, I really appreciate it. I'd just like to say that a lot of communities around the state, when they lost their giant commercial properties, have actually collapsed. Like Commissioner Tucci said, it's not an easy time in Nutley right now, but there is light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm very confident, and I'm very proud of everyone that's up here tonight, and I think we have a team, and a good team, because if somebody's budget's going up a little bit, somebody's budget's going down a little bit, and we make sure that we're very responsible to all the taxpayers in the Township of Nutley, because you come first. You come before anything, and I could tell you, working with these gentlemen- You come before anything, and I could tell you, working with these gentlemen almost the last eight years already, it is, these people put the town of Nutley first before they put themselves. I do, too, and before we put our families. So as much as we, none of us want our taxes going up, I travel all over the state, being the mayor of Nutley, and I have to tell you, no matter where I go and who I meet, people say to me all the time, "Oh, you're Nutley Mayor," and I look at them like, "You know about Nutley?" And they say to me, "You know, you have a great town there. You really have something special going on there." And what's been going around in their surrounding community for Nutley to hold on this long, it doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of great leaders, past and present. So I'd just like to thank all the board of commissioners. Steve, thank you. Joe, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Tucci. Like I said from the beginning, losing a ratable like Roche and being able to solicit the state for that funding, I'd like to thank you. Tom, I know you led the charge on that. All the commissioners did, you know, do their best to obtain that. It's a team effort up here.
Absolutely.
It's very much a team effort, and I'm very, very proud to be part of the team. And I think in the future, Nutley is really going to blossom from what happens at Roche. It's a very, very exciting time. With that being said, we're not going to vote on the...
We have public comment.
Yeah, okay. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners on our budget tonight?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. First, I want to say thanks to the citizens who are here tonight, and also thank you to the commissioners. I did go through the budget and saw the reductions, and they are appreciated. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, our 2013 budget was $49.87 million. Our 2014 budget was $52, so we went from $49.87 to $52.2 from 2013 to 2014. The 2015 budget is 54. what million? Okay, so we are going from $52.2 million to $54.26 million, which is an increase of approximately $2 million. Can you tell me why?
Yes.
Okay.
In our budget, when we receive the total state aid from the, that comes in for, as I mentioned earlier, for the county...
And what is that total right now, state aid?
Right now, it's $5.2 million.
And we asked for $6.2?
$6.2 million.
And that could go up or down, correct?
That can go up.
Only up?
Only up.
Okay, all right. So right now, we are guaranteed $5.2 million.
The state has not finally approved it, but they gave us the authorization to anticipate 85%. I don't think the state would give us the authority to anticipate 85% if they were going to take it away. Ultimate final approval comes from the state in the May timeframe.
Okay, so, and why, when we got $5.2 million, or we think we're getting $5.2 million, does our budget need to go up $2 million?
The reason for that is... The reason why our budget goes up, our appropriation budget goes up, is while we receive that money, we actually have to make a payment to the school and to the county. While the state reimburses us for the full effect of the loss of tax revenue from Hoffman LaRoche, they give us the full amount, and it's our responsibility to allocate it back to the school board and to the county. So you'll see an increase in our appropriation budget, because we actually have to make that payment.
So of that $5.2 million, what of that will go to the schools? What percentage of that $5.2 million from the state aid will go to the schools?
It would be about 67% of it, and I think that's about $3.4 million, roughly.
67% of the $5.2 goes to the schools?
Yeah.
And where else?
School and the county.
School and the county.
Yeah, if you think about it, the taxes are allocated roughly 48% of the tax dollars that attacked... When a taxpayer gets their bill, their total tax bill, 48% of that tax bill goes to actually cover the cost of the school system.
Right. In 2014, that exact number was 47.77% of...
Yeah, I did it 48%, but you're correct.
Okay, so I got it off the website. So what percentage will it be in 2015?
About the same.
47.77% of our budget will go to the schools in 2015?
That's correct.
Okay, and of that 67% of the state aid that we're receiving, the $5.2 million will go to the schools, correct?
No.
Schools and the county?
And the county.
Okay, all right.
So if you take that, I'm going to do 48% versus the extra percentage points, but if you take 48% and 17% roughly for the county, because the municipality's 35%, so the total municipal portion of the tax bill represents 35% or 35 cents on the dollar.
So pretty much the allocation from 2014 will be the same?
It should be about the same.
About the same?
I'm not aware of it at this point, changing too much.
Okay, great. So that was my second question, and you answered it, and I appreciate it. So we have a $54.263 million budget, and last year, we had a $52.2 million budget. And our average tax per homeowner in 2014 was $10,304. In 2013, it was $10,081, which was a 2.2% increase between 2013 and 2014. The increase this year is 2.7%, correct?
Yeah, 2.6, but 2.7 could be fine.
Okay.
We're in the same ballpark.
So we're going an increase in property tax from 2.2% to 2.7 or 2.6 something? And can you tell me why that is?
I explained that earlier. The tax rate is increasing because the assessable value of the town has gone down.
And over the past five years, how much has that gone down?
Well, it's hard for me to do that off the top of my head, because it's a five-year period.
You said it was how many million this year?
Well, it was $102 million this year. It was $89 million last year, and I'm trying to recall what it was in the previous years. But if you...
Roughly $200 million in lost assessed value in two years, correct?
Yeah, since 2013, almost $200 million, correct?
Okay, all right.
Actually, $191 million.
Which is tough to deal with, and I appreciate that you guys are dealing with it. My last thing, if I can have one more minute. We have, you talked in the back room when you were discussing the budget about the fact that our assessed values, you know, are a challenge, and that they are coming up due to new developments. East Center Street, 57 East Center Street, and 113 East Center Street were both huge developments that have happened in our town. And my question is, 57 East Center Street, the developer's fees were $24,000. 113 East Center Street, the developer's fees were $24,000. I think that those seem low, based on looking at the code and how developers' fees are assessed, and I guess that to put more money into the pot for future developments that are going to happen, is there any way that we could change our formula to have developers pay higher impact fees to attempt to alleviate some of the tax burden on the taxpayers and to also provide more for our schools?
That's a great question. The fees you're referring to are what they call COA fees.
COA?
COA.
How do you spell that?
It's an abbreviation, C-O-A-H, okay?
Okay, and what does it stand for?
It's, right, Council on Affordable Housing.
Okay.
Right, and so, under that provisions of that statute, you can assess a developer a fee, which I believe is 1.5% off the top of my head. The fees you're referring to for East Center Street, there's more fees to be collected, so it's not the full amount of the fee to date.
To be collected or that have been collected?
To be, to be, not collected yet.
Not collected yet?
They're due to be paid, right.
To be paid. Do you know what those would amount to?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
The COA account you're referring to has about $240,000 in it.
Okay.
Right, there's, and ultimately, what we are allowed to do under statute is make that money available for low-income residents who might have the benefit of doing improvements on their property. Maximum amount would be $10,000 that would be allowable. We don't have a COA ordinance on our books just yet, because there's been a lot of litigation around COA, so we've been taking a more conservative approach, waiting. So until it's clear, we have not, we don't have the ordinance in place, so we actually can't distribute those monies. To your point, though, the county also has home improvement money that would be available for low-income residents, and there's an opportunity that, once it's clear, that we could take the allowable amounts under COA, which is $10,000, and add that to the county amount, which is $25,000, would actually provide housing improvements for low-income residents of $35,000. And it's really a nice deal, because as long as you stay in the house for 10 years, you don't have to pay the money back.
And where are these homes?
I'm sorry?
And these homes that it's $10,000 to $30,000?
It's income-based in Nutley.
Okay.
It's not a particular home.
How many COA units do we have in Nutley?
We actually don't have COA units, per se.
But we have $240,000 in our budget for COA?
The use, the money that we collect for those fees, to your point, can be used to help residents of low income to improve their home.
Okay.
That's an allowable use of that money. So we could take it from developers, use the money to benefit our Nutley taxpayers so they can improve their homes.
So we collected $50,000 in COA funds for 57 East Center Street and 113 East Center Street. My question was about impact fees from those two developments.
You had two questions embedded. One was related to COA, the other was an impact fee.
You brought up COA, I'm sorry, I didn't bring up COA. I wasn't even aware about COA, I'm sorry.
You were using both.
Okay, because I didn't know...
But to get to your point, yes, there is an impact fee ordinance that we do have on it.
That we have not collected, is what you said, correct?
No, I don't want you to be confused.
Just let him give it, just let him answer.
I don't want you to be confused. The fees that you are referring to are COA fees. Your question related to impact fees, so while you referred to the fees, it was for COA, not impact fees. Impact fees can be imposed, for example, on a developer to improve the sewer system, to improve water pressure, to improve, ultimately, yes, you could look to things that could have an impact on the community. We will consider that when we look at the Hoffman-LaRoche redevelopment.
But have you considered, you said you could collect impact fees for schools, sewerage, et cetera, but what, I want to be clear about this, you have not collected those yet.
No, that's not true.
For 57 and 113 East Center.
The impact for 57, well, for the builder that's doing work on East Center Street, there's a requirement that he will improve the road when the construction is completed. There was also...
They're already done. These two are done, and these are completed.
No, they're not. They're almost done. They're getting close to being done. But, well, I'm looking at East Center Street as...
No, not the East Center Street redevelopment, the two huge apartment complexes that are already completed. That's 57 East Center Street and 113 East Center Street, those are done.
Right, they are. They're almost, well, 113's almost done.
And I'm just asking you about impact fees collected, not COA fees for...
The impact fees that you're referring to, so the River Road property, we collected $120,000 from that property.
Well, I filed an OPRAs, and it did not show up on the OPRAs, so I'm just concerned.
It's actually, it was in our budget. There was money that was collected from them.
So you said before that it had, it was going to be collected, but now you're saying, maybe we should just take this offline?
Absolutely. All I'm trying to do is clarify is that what you were referring to, for me, was interpreted as COA fees.
Okay, the $24,000 and the $24,000.
That was COA fees. The question you're having is, can we collect an impact fee, right? And how do we collect that? And that could be done through road improvements, that could be done to support the town, and we can do those things. And I was trying to answer your question, as we go to look at the Roche property, we will consider that, because that's a huge development for those things. There have been smaller things that were done, and what I was referring to is on East Center Street, was that the builder that's working there does have a commitment to improve East Center Street as part of that redevelopment, which is an impact fee on the company, the community, because we don't have to do it. The developer will do that.
And who is that developer?
Eagle Construction.
Eagle Construction. Okay, thank you.
American Eagle Construction, sorry.
I really didn't mean to get off on the COA thing, whatever. I just was, I was concerned about impact fees as it relates to developments that are going on, because we have a lot of them going on.
Right, and there's, just, my point was, there's this, we do have an ordinance on the books for impact fees.
Okay.
And there are limitations as to what you can do, because you cannot ever have yourself in a position where it's a quid pro quo, you do this and you'll get that.
Okay.
Because that's not allowable under law.
Commissioner, if I could just jump in for one second. Ms. Landry, I just want you to be, to know that, this whole Board of Commissioners, we are interested in impact fees in Roche, and we are, you know, but there's a legal process, like Commissioner Evans says, that you can't just wing it. We have to make sure we follow the letter of law. So you could rest assured that every penny we can get legally, we are going to, you know, fight for that money.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Very welcome.
Last one's real quick. One of our budget line items is four-plus million dollars reserved for uncollected taxes. Could you explain why we reserve $4 million for uncollected taxes in our budget?
Well, it's anticipation of, if taxpayers don't pay their taxes, that we have the reserve to offset those uncollectible taxes.
And what were the uncollected taxes in 2014?
Quite a bit less than that, probably under $150,000.
$150,000 uncollected taxes in 2014?
Roughly, yeah.
In 2014, and in our budget for 2015, we have $4,800,000?
Yeah, you're looking at it, so yes.
Okay, so we're reserving $4,800,000, and last year, we only had $150 in uncollected taxes? Why do we reserve so much?
It's actually $4,284,000.
Okay.
By statute, we're required to have a reserve. It's a statutory calculation to do that reserve. Because we have that reserve, right, it actually contributes to our, what we call our fund balance, right, which is the extra money that we do have, right? And what we have consistently been doing with that is, we take our fund balance, and we, you basically use 75% of that fund balance to reduce the tax levy each year. So we return it each year to the taxpayers.
Okay, but our tax levy went up this year.
Went down.
From what to what?
It went from $38,379,000 in 2014 to $38,212,000 this year. Went down hundreds.
But we are having a $94 increase in our property taxes?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Because the assessable value of the town went down.
Okay, so we had a decrease in the tax levy, but an increase in our property taxes. Got it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to comment on this ordinance public hearing? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Odrea, 133 High Street. Last time I stood here, I thought it was going to be a 2.6% property tax increase. Now it's going to be a 2.7. What I'm trying to get at is this, 2009 to 2013, we had a $5.5 million, well, actually, in 2009, it was $44,000, $44,680. And in 2013, we had a, our municipal budget was $49 million, from $44 million to $49 million, from 2009 to 2013. That's like a $1.3 million increase in those four years in the municipal budget. I know that BO and county are their own entity. I know that BO and county are their own entity, that's their thing, but what I'm trying to get at, I see a pattern here, you know, like, it just keeps increasing and increasing and increasing, and like I said, the last time I was here was, you know, I read in Nutley Sun, Northern New Jersey, that you were gonna, gonna be a 2.6% property, property tax increase for all of us, now it's gonna be a 2.7, like the news just got worse. This is what I'm talking about when I say, like, cap and control your spending, pretend it's like your own home, you know, if you can't afford it, don't swipe the credit card, it's the bottom line. I mean, I know we've had, I mean, I hate to harp on this, but, you know, my income is somewhat fixed now because of the whole economy, of not just this state, not just this town, not just this country, but, but, you know, the whole thing overall, the economy's not that great. So, if I'm not getting a wage increase, why am I giving the people, the public servants, who I contribute to their benefits and their wages, they're getting wage increases? It has to stop. I mean, there's a point where you gotta say no, like, I said before, my boss, when I ask him for a wage increase, and he says, no, he can't afford it, it's understood, I'm happy I got the job. So, all I'm saying is, I can't believe it's gonna go to 2.7. I thought it was gonna be, I know you talk about, there's better news, Tucci, like, down the road, you know, or, I guess our assessed value's gonna get higher, even though we lost, the town's assessed value lost $190, $190 million over the course of the past two years. I would think if our values are all assessed lower, our property taxes should be lower, but I guess it doesn't work that way, no matter what, the homeowner here, in this town, not just this town, not just this county, you know, but, you know, we, we're losing, you know, we're getting nickel and dimed out of our own homes, we're getting nickel and dimed, you know, the food out of our own children's mouths. So, control yourselves, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to comment on the budget?
Go ahead. I'm ready.
You're ready? Seeing no one?
Seeing no one, motion to close?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 121-15, recognizing May 10th to May 16th, 2015, as Food Allergy Awareness Week. So moved as written.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Resolution number 122-15, encouraging citizens of Nutley to ride bicycles for personal and societal benefits, certainly helps in exercise and health. So moved, as written.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Resolution number 123-15, recognizing May 10th, 2015, as World Lupus Day. Lupus is one of those terrifying, horrifying diseases that we don't hear much about. I certainly had a family member that was lost to lupus, I, I know what families go through, it's a very, very, very difficult thing for a family to face. So it's something that the Health Department's gonna do in May, is to heighten awareness of that disease, and hope to God one day that they find a cure. So moved as written.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Resolution number 124-15, celebrating National Nurses Week, May 6th to 12th, 2015. Before I move that, I want to say something about how important it is to recognize nurses. I have the Health Department, I've got a team of nurses that are on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, another, another great benefit of Nutley. They go to homes of people all hours of the day and night, maybe to take blood pressure, maybe to comfort someone who lost a loved one, to help transport some of our seniors to the doctors and to the hospitals, and if they can't get there, by golly, they, they seem to find a doctor to get to the house. But we have a good nursing team here, and this resolution certainly well-deserved, so moved as written.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On April 9th, the Nutley J.C.'s held their, their annual event, their Distinguished Service Awards Dinner at the Valley Regency in Clifton, and I'm not going to bore you with all of the resolutions that I have here that we presented that evening, but I would like to highlight some of the recipients. The Educator of the Year was Mr. John Maiello, the Director of the Nutley High School Concert Band. The Public Health and Safety Award was presented to Nutley Fire Lieutenant, retired, Michael Nazivacchia. Civic Affairs Award to Michelle Flytell, who was also one of the founding people who created our, our Nutley Thriving Survivors Program. Our Outstanding Young Man of the Year, Steve Picciano, a Leader in the Holy Family Knights of Columbus, a Director of Business and Development, who was very well-deserved of that, that distinction. And last but not least, our Business Award, the Nutley Business Award, presented to our own Mayor, Alphonse Pacheco. I was very happy and very proud to be there because of Al's involvement, not only in the community, but also in businesses in this community. It was a wonderful event, it's a wonderful event here, and I'd like to present all five of these resolutions as written, and Mayor, I'd just like to congratulate you once again, I was very proud and honored to be there and to actually present these resolutions on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, send it to all of our honorees. I move all five resolutions.
Second, all five resolutions, Mayor, congratulations again, I know I congratulated you that evening, I think all the honorees deserve a special recognition and special applause. Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye, and Mayor, I ditto what the Commissioner said, and you got a fine young man there, probably next to that, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Congratulations, Mayor, and that night is just a real feel-good night about being president, and especially as an elected official in Nutley, it's really, you're, you're, they're honoring people who are volunteering in the community, that's, it's the distinguished service award. Every year I go there, I, I walk out feeling good about the town, that there are people out there willing to, to give back to the community, and I vote aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
I kind of feel silly voting on my own award, but I like to...
You can abstain.
I'm not gonna abstain on all four of them, but I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Tucci, and all the Commissioners for your well wishes. I'm really blessed, and it was really an honor to be up there with all of the honorees, it was really a gala event. I'm, I've learned that night, I'm a much better giver than I am taker. I was kind of embarrassed by the whole night, but to have my parents sitting in the audience, and to still have both my mom and dad alive so late in life, and have my children there, and all the residents, the ambulance squad, the police and fire, and all the Commissioners there, was really, a really embarrassing kind of moment for me to be in the light, but I really, really want to thank the J.C.'s, and it's really an honor to be called for something like that, and you really learn how special your town is, and the reasons why we live here, that because of organizations like that and events like that, so I vote aye. With that being said, Commissioner Tucci?
All right, I have one more resolution, this one I have to read, though. Whereas in 1949, the legislature set aside the last Friday of April as Arbor Day, in order to promote the planting of trees and to encourage the protection of our forests from fires and pests that destroyed the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands, and whereas half of New Jersey's total land area is forested or tree-covered, and whereas trees play an important role in the ecosystem in which we live, and trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil caused by wind and water, and we've learned that again after yesterday's rains, if you take a quick look at our parks, clean the air we breathe and the water we drink, produce oxygen, provide habitat for birds and wildlife, and reduce heating and cooling costs by moderating temperature, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper for fine literature, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees provide increased property value, enhanced economic viability, and pleasing aesthetic qualities along streets and properties and municipalities, and whereas tree planting in yards and farms and schoolyards and parks and along streets and highways creates an enduring heritage for generations to follow, and whereas the Township of Nutley has completed its 28th year as a member of Tree City USA, now therefore be it resolved that I, Commissioner Mauro Tucci, Director of Parks and Public Property, hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2015, as Arbor Day in the community of Nutley, and be it further resolved that all citizens are urged to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our town's urban forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. I move the resolution.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tack, of property taxes for Block 9700-10-C0327 for $1,244.58, for Block 1300-1-C2013 for $2,683.05, for Block 44002-5 for $17,637.85, and for Block 7004 for $2,680.59 for a total amount of $24,246.07, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The following resolution I read on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. This resolution is for the authorizing the appointment of Mazer Consulting as a professional planner for services related to the preparation of a redevelopment plan for a portion of the Huffner Roche redevelopment project, specifically, that portion would be the medical center phase, whereas the above-mentioned consulting services are required for certain specified professional services to be rendered or performed by a person or persons authorized by law to practice a recognized profession whose practice is regulated by law within the meaning of NJSA 20A:11-1 as amended, and whereas the performance of said professional services requires knowledge of an advanced type in the field of, of learning required by a prolonged formal course of specialized training study, as distinguished from general academic instruction or apprenticeship and training, whereas Mazer Consulting has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year that would violate either NJSA 19:44A20.5, or any and all relevant executive orders or New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements, and that the appointment will bar Mazer Consulting PA from making any reportable contributions through the term of the appointment, whereas the fees for these services will not exceed $12,000, subject to certification of the Chief Financial Officer, such certification to be obtained prior to signing a contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that in accordance with the public contracts laws, the Board hereby authorizes and approves the appointment of Mazer Consulting PA as the consultant to provide and render professional planning, engineering, and consulting services relating to the medical center phase of the Huffner Roche redevelopment project as described herein, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. Commissioner Scarpelli? Whereas a discrepancy has arisen with respect to water consumption billing at 65 River Road, Nutley, New Jersey, account number 9454-3, and whereas due to being unable to access the property, inaccurate reading was not obtained, resulting in estimated water consumption for this account. Whereas the owner received the new water meter on April 1st, 2015, the actual read on the old meter was substantially lower than previously estimated, and whereas such discrepancy resulted in overpayments of water charges in the monthly billing periods of September 2014 through March 2015. Whereas Township investigated this matter and resolved the discrepancy as set forth herein, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to cancel water charges in the amount of $6,675.55 for March 2015, and refund the overpayment of water charges for September 2014 through February 2015 in the amount of $19,365.23 to JERC Partners 171 Route 173, Suite 201, Asbury, New Jersey, property owners of 65 River Road, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund $50 to Linda Grasso, 47 Vincent Place Apartment 214, Nutley, New Jersey, for a refund of payment for a municipal parking rent. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. Whereas Township of Nutley has entered into a contract with Sefeli and Son General Contracting, 81 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, for a project known as 2014, Vary's Crack Ceiling, for an original contract amount of $29,770, and whereas engineering services are recommended, the attached change order number one, in the amount of $130.10, dated November 13, 2014, for additional work, whereas funds are available from account number 401-806-277, in the amount of $130.10, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is attached as a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley, and Sefeli and Son General Contracting, for the project known as 2014, Vary's Crack Ceiling, and is hereby authorized and approved, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Township Clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the 2015 purchase of asphalt material for the, for the Township of Nutley, to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, May 13, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. Whereas a discrepancy has arisen with respect to water consumption and billing at 139 Cambridge Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, account number 1580, and whereas due to being unable to access the property, inaccurate reading was not obtained, resulting in estimated water consumption for this account, whereas the owner received the new water meter on January 13, 2015, and the actual read on the old meter was substantially lower than previously estimated, whereas such discrepancy resulted in an overestimation of water charges for the quarterly billing period of December 2014, whereas the Township investigated this matter and resolved the discrepancy as set forth herein. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to cancel water charges in the amount of $1,024.14 for account number 1580, 139 Cambridge Drive. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas bids for Chestnut Place and Willow Place improvements were received and opened on April 8, 2014. And whereas AJM Contractors, 300 Color Road, Clifton, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. Whereas the base bid for the Chestnut Place and Willow Place improvements in the amount of $126,479, and the alternate bid number one for sawing and sealing joints in concrete base cores if and where directed in the amount of $5,787.82, for a total bid of $132,274. Whereas the award of this contract is subject to the availability and appropriation of sufficient funds from the Essex County Community Development Block Grant Account, number T19909901, in the amount of $93,536. Ordinance number 3213A in the amount of $370.89. An ordinance number 3242E in the amount of $20,900. An ordinance number 3243A in the amount of $17,467.11, and subject to the caveat, having been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to AJM Contractors for the total amount not to exceed $132,274, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter in and sign a contract for the Township of Nutley, subject to the final approval and funding by the Essex Community Development Block Grant. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
All I have, Mayor. Thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Township Clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the police and crossing guard uniforms to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers Town Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, May 20, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly open and read. Specifications are available in the Purchasing Department, Town Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. Whereas the safety and security of citizens of Nutley, New Jersey, and surrounding areas are vitally important, and a large percentage of our citizens regularly drive or ride in motor vehicles on our roadways, and whereas the use of seat belts in passenger vehicles serve as estimated $13,525 in 2014, and regular seat belt use in the single most effective way to reduce fatalities and motor vehicle crashes. The use of seat belts is supported by the laws of Nutley, New Jersey, May 18 through May 31, 2015, and has been selected as the National Click It or Ticket Mobilization Enforcement Period. Across the country, law enforcement officers will actively be participating in the mobilization to ensure all motor vehicle occupants are buckled up and day or night to reduce the risk of injury and death caused in traffic crashes. Increased enforcement of seatbelt laws coupled with publicity has proven to be effective method to increase seatbelt use rates and decrease fatal crashes. Now therefore be resolved, I, Mayor Alphonse Pacheco, do hereby proclaim and announce May 18 to May 31, 2015, as click it or ticket mobilization in Nutley, New Jersey, and urge all citizens always wear seat belts when driving or riding on our roadways. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That concludes our business portion meeting this evening. Is there anyone this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Anyone like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing no one?
If we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Before I vote aye to adjourn, I would just like to have one more statement here. I know that every time these budgets come up, you know, we get some criticism, in fact, you know, and it's easy to be a critic at a safe distance. We try to obtain every year here, and since I've been working with everybody on this board, is to strike a balance, to give services to all the residents, to make sure we have a safe community, parks, our streets plowed, paved, good Health Department revenue and finance, and even a good school system at that. You know, so when we get people that come up here and say, you know, people get raises, they've done this and that, I just think that, you know, we have really done a really good job of controlling cost and given, in striking that balance and providing services as well. I'd just like to say that I've traveled across New Jersey a lot of times, and to see something as critical as Roche move out of our town, and I don't want to be light on that this evening, and for all five of us to be able to navigate through that without having a devastating impact on our taxpayers is really something that should be committed and admired by all these gentlemen up here, because it's not easily obtained. And I'll be the first one up here to say that we do bicker and fight at times and take